Good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Kathleen McIntyre will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. Will you all rise?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean. Madam Chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kathleen.
You were supposed to address me as the President of the United States.
That's right. If you really want that job.
No, I don't.
I'm teasing you. Good job. Okay, well, we want to welcome you to the February 28th meeting. This is a study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,940th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, March the 14th of this year. We have one council absence, and that is our President, Jim Jolly. He has a new little boy, and Gabriel was born on the Feast of Gabriel of February. What's the date, 27th, was it?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, that's what I thought. Okay, and we congratulate the Jolly family. All righty. Any special groups in the audience? You're all special, so that's good. And any council announcements?
Madam President.
Councilman McCullough and then Councilman Donovan.
I just got to give a shout out. I was trying to see if, so coming out of school today, I was picking up Harper, and Harper is seven, and she's in second grade, and she is the Student of the Month.
All right.
And for empathy, which something she definitely gets from her mom, not me. But if she is watching, congratulations, Harper, and you make us all proud. Thank you.
Yay. Good job. All right. Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. On a national level, I meant to mention it during the regular, we've all seen what's been happening in Ukraine and what soldiers are going through, what civilians are going through, and it's quite scary when you think of the neighborhood streets. Imagine right now if there were armored vehicles and armed troops traveling down Five Mile. It'd be pretty frightening, not only for combat soldiers, but also for just civilians and women and children and what have you. So just please keep them in your prayers. I know everyone's watching closely because there are so many ramifications across the globe, and that's why I felt it was important to talk about it tonight and let anyone know out there that the city of Livonia is with you. And if you could please say a prayer for those people dealing with that, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Certainly, thank you. Anyone else? The flowers that are in front of everyone are the national flower of Ukraine, and we're going to be groups getting together to raise some dollars to send over there by selling those. So contact your local florist, and they'll be happy to sell those to you. We are also having ribbons for the doors, et cetera, and those dollars will also be donated. There is a church in Warren that is collecting that, those goods as well. Is there any other announcements? No? Okay. Then we will go into our study meeting. Excuse me. Audience communication, right? We have to go to? Anyone wishing to address the council on anything that's not on the yellow sheet for this evening, which is our agenda? Seeing no one coming to the mic, then we'll go into the study meeting. This is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken. However, there will be a combination of resolutions possibly for each item, and the resolutions offered include an approving, a denying, or referring resolution to a committee or a city department for the report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for information of the city council. And please note that all of the items that are on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting, which is Monday, March the 14th, where they will be voted on, officially voted on, that is, as well. If you want to participate tonight, if you'd approach the podium over to my left, we would be glad to hear your comments and any other kinds of information you'd like to give to us. And please give us your name and address for the record. All righty. Was there any other things that we need to take care of? I guess not. Let's move into item number one, under New Business Council, which is a reappointment of Jim McCann, or James McCann, to the Livonia Board of Ethics. This is brought to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire March the 1st of 2025. Or Mr. McCann is not able to be with us tonight. So any of you that have any insights into Councilman, former Councilman Jim McCann, we would be happy. Councilman Barr and then Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, obviously, Jim McCann has a long history with our city, including in this role. I'd be happy to offer approving resolution for this, for consent, if there's no objection.
Thank you so much, Councilman Barr. Councilman Donovan, all set? Okay. All righty. If there's nothing else on there, then we'll move to the audience. Anyone wishing to comment on this? Number one. Hearing and seeing no one. Item two is a request for insurance of a permit for Wade Shows to hold a carnival amusement ride at Ford Field in Veterans Park. And the spree will be back, and it'll be June 21st through the 26th. Put it on your calendar of this year. During reference hours, a permit for a firework display by the American Fireworks, Inc. to be held at 10:15 p.m. on Sunday, June 26th, at Veterans Park. And authorization to use and lease the facilities at Ford Field, Eddie Edgar Arena, and Samowski Veterans Park during spree. Our President of our Livonia Anniversary Committee and his bodyguard, Brian Duggan, is with him. Dan Spurling, President, would you take the floor? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. It's been a long time since we've done this, but we're going to try to get through this this year. And any questions? Hopefully, I can field them all.
Yes, Councilman Donovan, if you're ready, Dan. Yep.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thanks, Mr. Spurling and Mr. Duggan, for being here. I know everyone's been really excited and anticipating having the spree back. With the spree being gone for the last two years, are we expecting less rides? Or are we going to expect pretty much the same kind of event we had pre-COVID?
We're going to minimize some of the rides and some of the events. We don't know what to expect this year. I mean, we're pretty much, in past years, always been a normal process. We have no idea if we'll have larger crowds or smaller crowds this year. So we're going to make it work.
If it's my opinion, this town's pretty resilient, and I know people are pretty excited about having the spree. It's something that I've been going to since I was a little kid. So if I was a betting man, I'd be betting a lot of people were going to show up because of the hard work that you and your committee do and the city does. And I think you'd be pleasantly surprised. Thank you, Mr. Duggan and Mrs. Spurling.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman McCullough.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just even when you guys announced that, I think that was the hottest thing on social media. I think it had more shares than anything. And I do echo what Councilman Donovan says. I think that it's going to be a very strong struggling, something that Livonia's been itching for for the last couple of years. And when we seen this, like I was telling you guys between meetings, this was a really awesome thing to see on the agenda. So if you guys need any help from us, I'm sure we're willing to help out in any way. Just let us know. Thank you. Has there been a motion?
Not yet. If you'd like.
I'll offer an approving for consent if there's no objections.
Perfect. Anyone else from the council? No? Anyone from the audience? Seeing no one? Mr. Spurling, Mr. Duggan, want to make any comments over there? No?
Hard to believe he's not making any.
Well, I think it's been said. I think a lot of people are excited in town to have it back. So thank you for all your work and all the volunteers that do so much work on this event. We appreciate it so much. All righty. You have an approving on consent from Councilman McCullough and others. But he made the motion. So if there's nothing else, you can go to item three, which is a request to close Stark Road from the Livonia Family Y to Linden and Linden from Farmington Road to Stark Road to traffic from 8:00 a.m. June the 20th through 12:00 noon on June 27th, Monday through Monday. And to request that the city seek permission from Wayne County Road Commission to allow the closure of Farmington Road between the I-96 overpass, Five Mile Road, from 6:30 p.m. through 11:30 p.m. on June 26th of this year, Sunday, in connection with the Spree 72. Wow. And this is requested by the President, Dan Spurling.
Madam Chair.
Please, go right ahead.
I'd be happy to offer approving for consent if there's no objection, although I will note that for official minutes, we may want to strike the Family Y from that, since it doesn't exist anymore. I'm guessing that's just a copy and paste from a previous year. But with that technicality, I'll offer approving for consent.
Super. Good eyes. Okay. Any further comments? No? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing none, then you have an approving, not once, but twice. Okay. Number four. You're batting 100 so far. Number four, request to display banners on Farmington Road and Five Mile Road, four-by-eight signs at City Hall and Ford Field from May 25th of this year through June 27th of this year. Brought to us again by President Dan Spurling of the Livonia Spree Committee. Councilwoman McIntyre.
Madam Chair and others, it would be my pleasure to offer an approving resolution for consent.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Nobody from the council? Anybody from the audience?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, go right ahead.
I just want to take a commercial. We're definitely going to take you up on branding. I mean, we need some help. I know this has probably got thousands of people watching this right now, so we need volunteers this year. I'm sure we lost quite a bit of volunteers over the last few years. A lot of them aged out, and we just need them. So I did create an email address. I think it's livoniasprey@gmail.com. That's livoniasprey@gmail.com. Just sign up, and please, you can help pour beers, sell beer tickets, whatever it takes to make it the success it's been for the last 50 years, I believe. We need it, so thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please, go right ahead.
If I may?
Yes, please.
I'd be happy, and I'm sure there are others, that'd be happy to help you set up an Eventbrite registration. I think that's, no, not Eventbrite. Sign-up Genius, where you can put specific, and then you don't have to call everybody back, right? They can sign up for specific shifts and specific activities. And there are a lot of us who've had kids in school who are familiar with that. And so I think there are a number of people here that you could tap into who'd be happy to help you set up something like that.
Thank you.
Great suggestion. Thank you. Great. All righty. I mean, even to drive the bus, right? I mean, there's all kinds of things that you need help.
We could use all kinds of help.
Loaders, the whole bit.
Offering to help call people, follow track, whatever. We have no idea what we're going to end up with this year. As you said earlier about the hits on Facebook, our normal hits are between 12,000 and 15,000. That first 72 hours, we had 92,000 hits.
That's great.
That scares me. We really thank you very much.
Well, we thank you because, over the years, you guys have done just a fabulous job. It's just a standout in this community. It really is. Thank you. Okay. Item five, then, council, is a board of contract. This comes to us from the Mayor and Government Affairs. It's lobbying services to secure Wayne County ARPA dollars for Project Catalyst, launching Livonia Vision 21 from budgeted funds. Okay. LaShawn, go right ahead.
Oh, thank you, Madam Vice President. Good evening, council. LaShawn Thomas, Director of Government Affairs. I am here to respectfully request council's approval of a contract with Capital Relations for lobbying services beginning March 1st, 2022, through February 28th, 2023, in the amount of $43,500 from budgeted funds. The American Rescue Plan Act has made millions of dollars available to local governments. Wayne County Chief Administrative Officer Khalil Ray Hall and his Economic Development Team have been meeting with communities to discuss and develop a plan to allocate the county's share of $339 million. I am proud to say that the city has submitted a proposal, Project Catalyst, launching Livonia Vision 21, which involves building a new senior center adjacent to the Jackie Kirksey Community Rec Center. As you can imagine, the process to receive money from the county is extremely competitive. The 43 communities in Wayne County all have needs and wants. Not only does our proposal have to gain approval from the county administration, it must also be approved by 15 commissioners. Capital Relations was established 11 years ago by Mike Garvaglia. Both Mike and his partner Shannon Price have strong and very well-established connections in the county. Mike served as Executive Warren Evans's appointee on the Wayne County Airport Authority, where he was the chair for two years. Shannon Price is a former county commissioner, township supervisor, and is currently serving as an appointee for Executive Evans on the Wayne County Building Authority. Shannon Price and Alan Helm Camp, Attorney for Capital Relations, are here tonight, and we are happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. I'm sorry, there's glare in here, believe it or not. This new office is really something. It's really nice, except that it's a little bit of a glare. Counsel, did you want me to go to you, or do you want Mr. Price to say anything at this point? Yeah. Go right ahead, Councilman McCullough? Yes?
Yep, it's me.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Just in general, after reading the packet item, this item is for $43,500. Right now, we're talking about $330 million through the county. And then even on top of that, you have billions at the state level. I'd like to be on record to basically state that in the last federal funding, Livonia got $8 million, and everything was based on the Community Development Block grant. Redford Township, I think, got upwards of $30 to $40 million. Dearborn got, I mean, don't quote me on these numbers, but there was a lot more that these communities got. And we were hardest hit. And so for something like this, in the scheme, you know, we're trying to be fiscally responsible. But for $43,000 at stake at a potential $339 million, knowing that we kind of got shafted during the original rundown, I'd be happy to support that. I know my colleagues will probably be weighing in for that. Just to put a motion out there, I'd offer an approving for regular.
Okay. An approving for regular so far. Yes. Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. There's 43 communities in Wayne County. Each one of them are going to be vying for the $339 million. I think the Project Catalyst council has met with the administration and looked at the project. While I have some concerns about the amount of money the project costs, I think that a $43,500 investment into a lobbying firm to lobby on our behalf at the county level makes sense when we're talking about getting millions back in return. This is a large project. This is a project that I think is deserving of Livonia and our Livonia senior community. I think it will also help the county, which I think is very important. I think the county will deliberate about that. How does a project like this not only impact the city of Livonia, but how does it impact the county? And I think that this firm will be able to help us do just that, be able to get as much money as possible, so it's not coming out of the city budget necessarily or out of the Livonia taxpayers from the city portion of it necessarily. I want to make sure that we're spending our dollars as fiscally responsible as possible. And I think a $43,000 investment, when there are millions at stake, is a great, fiscally responsible decision to try to get as much money back in return for this project that will put us on the map more so than we already are. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Certainly. Thank you. Councilman Barr.
Yeah. I would echo many of the comments that have been made. As Councilman Donovan alluded to, each one of us, I believe, has had the opportunity to review the presentation that's been made to the county already. I think that presentation is exceptionally well done. Definitely support the direction of what we're trying to do here with this new senior center. I think there's a lot of reasons that makes sense. And just to make something clear, too, and I'm not, Councilman McCullough knows this, and I know what his intent was, but it's not $339 million that we're asking for. That's what the county has. I believe what we're looking for is in the low 20s. But 330. But so I agree with all of that. My question with this, though, LaShawn, is, I have a few questions for you, and that is certainly $43,000, if that's what's necessary to put us in the running for $21 million. I mean, who's going to argue with that? That makes all the sense in the world. My question is, though, why is this needed when we have, I mean, we have a mayor that I know has a working relationship with Wayne County. We have people, I'm not going to mention names, but we know who they are. We have people in the administration that have connections with Wayne County. We have Commissioner Morecki, who I know is working on our behalf. We've got commissioners that have been involved deeply with Wayne County. At the presentation that we saw the other day, the names on the Wayne County side that were talked about is who we're dealing with on this. Our names that are familiar to, I think, every one of us, people that we all know personally or have met at many occasions. It's not like these people are hard to find. Can you help me understand, in what we're investing, that the city doesn't already have the ability to do?
Oh, absolutely. That's a great question, Councilman Barr. So I just want to first start off by saying that this isn't the first time that the city has used lobbying services. Several years ago, we had a contract with Karub and Associates, a Lansing-based firm. And at that time, they did legislative monitoring and a limited scope of lobbying services. They focused on things like the home rule, racetrack issues, and property tax issues. Then sometime after 2010, those responsibilities were assigned to the city attorney at the time, who was Don Knapp. And he also was a former chief of staff to State Representative Thaddeus McCarter. So this is not the first time the city has requested outside services. Bringing our proposal to the finish line is going to require multiple conversations with multiple lawmakers. And of course, we are very grateful that we have relationships with our commissioners, and certainly, the administration has connections as well. However, we feel that Capital Relations has the key partnerships and relationships that are going to be necessary to move this forward. I will let them elaborate a little bit more on the types of connections that they have and why they think that, or why they are certain that they are in the best position to secure this funding for us. But it's kind of like, you think of, I'd use maybe DPW as an example. You know, when we have a certain amount of snow, you know, they are very well-equipped to handle it. But when we get like a snowmageddon, they're calling in all the plows. They're hiring contractors because it's so much that they need more assistance. So I will let, at this time, Shannon, speak if you'd like to.
Madam Vice President, I'm assuming the glare was off in my head, so I apologize about that. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. LaShawn touched on a lot of it. I mean, there's, we all know, I mean, I've been involved in politics for a long time, and we have relationships with a lot of people. But in this situation, I think it's really getting up to the administration level and the staffing and the administration level. Khalil is a great example, who's directing the project, but he has a lot of people that are working under him. The county, as you may know, I know you guys talked about roads earlier today in your previous meeting, so you know about the staffing issues at the county. It's not just in the roads division, that's across the board.
What will this $43,000 do for that? That's a rhetorical question. Sorry, Shannon, keep going.
Councilman Barr, I wish $43,000 was enough, because I have to drive around this place. But no, I mean, I think a lot of it is working the relationships we have, making sure that they're educated on the project and the impact of the project. There is no doubt that there's 43, as mentioned by a couple of councilmen earlier, there's 43 communities. Every community is striving for some of that 43, or part of that $340 million. Every community is going to get money. There's no doubt about that. I think where we can come into play and have a huge difference is understanding the six buckets. The county's divided the $339 million into six different buckets. Health, economic recovery, infrastructure, public spaces, workforce, and housing. You guys may have known about those, but those are the six different buckets that they've separated the money into. And the Livonia Catalyst proposal, I believe that you can actually tap into probably three or four of those. Health with taking your senior center and tying that into the community center, which gives them more access to health and wellness with workout facilities, pool, whatnot. Economic recovery, when you take, and infrastructure, when you take this existing senior center and try to work in the new city center project. And then, obviously, on public spaces, when we talk about pathways. So there's three different, or four different pots that we can work into. And I think our expertise of being able to navigate that market, the administration and the commissioners point out why that's important. And I think it gets into, not just on the administration, but the council, too. When we have a great relationship with, not council, I'm sorry, commissioners, we have a great relationship with Commissioner Morecki, but you also have to go get, you know, at least seven other commissioners to follow your project. And there's seven of those that reside in the city of Detroit, and convincing the people in the city of Detroit that a project in the city of Livonia is worthwhile and is worth over $20 million can be complicated at times.
Appreciate you going through that, Shannon. I'll ask you this, since you're there, but if it's more appropriate, LaShawn, I'll let you guys decide who wants to answer this. But has your firm been doing work on this already to this point?
We, I don't know if you want to jump on that.
Sure, yes, absolutely. So we actually did have engaged Capital Relations earlier this year, or I should say, at the end of 2021. That was because we needed help in figuring out how the county was going to proceed with distributing the ARPA dollars and the scope of the competition. And so, once we realized that we were in a very, we felt we had a very strong case with Project Catalyst, we are now looking to hire them to do the more specific job of advocating and moving the project forward through completion. I'd also add that we were able to operate under the purview of the contract not requiring council approval at that time, based on the amount.
Well, that was going to be my next question. What have we paid them to this point?
We have paid them approximately $14,000.
I almost could have guessed that number. So do you anticipate, LaShawn, this contract being extended beyond a year?
You know, to be honest, I would say that we have not discussed that. Our main focus right now is just getting the money from the county. The contract is written as such that their focus is to secure the funding for Project Catalyst, launching Livonia Vision 21. And possibly, you know, we have a couple of other plans that we may submit, but that is their focus. So at this time, we don't have any discussions on whether or not we would need to move forward after February 28th of next year.
What, you say there's an account number given to us, but where is this coming from? This money?
This is coming from.
I don't know. I don't think account numbers memorized. My last name's not Slater, so.
Sure. And actually, you know, I do not have the, I know that I did include that in the information that I uploaded in Civic Clerk, but it is coming from the Department of Government Affairs. It's budgeted funds.
From the Department of Government Affairs, okay. And then, sorry, let me just, I can't write and talk at the same time. Another question, in the information you provided, it talked about, I actually have it up here right now. "The firm will provide frequent and detailed reports on the progress of this engagement and its activities in the Office of the Mayor, Government Affairs, and others as directed." What's the nature of those reports? How frequently are we getting those reports?
We have not set necessarily a regular cadence to the reports. We are in, over the few months that we had engaged Capital Relations officially, we were in contact several times a week just to get on board, to find out what was, some things were happening at such a fast pace. We really didn't need at that time to establish a specific cadence, but all of that will be established once we implement the contract, if council approves.
If I may, LaShawn, for Shannon. Thank you, LaShawn. Shannon, you guys obviously do this kind of work. I'm guessing you have some kind of reporting structure that you typically do. Can you give me an idea? I mean, when our background information says the firm will provide frequent and detailed reports, I'm expecting to hear a plan for what those frequent detailed reports are.
Yeah. Yeah, every, councilman, every client's different. Some clients, we meet, we meet in person or do a regular telephone call every two weeks. Our municipal clients, we normally give them a report once a week of everything that's going on, an email report of what's going on in Lansing, what's going on in the county, and then a monthly report. That kind of compiles all of that. So, we just work with each client separately, you know, individually, on what works for them. As LaShawn mentioned, in the fall, when we were working together, and let me just say, the project, by the way, on the county keeps moving. At one point, when they were rolling out the three-hundred-and-forty million dollars, you know, their original comment was, "Oh, we're gonna wrap this all up by the end of 2021." And then that, the goalpost kept moving and moving. Then they were, "We're gonna take these to the commission at the end of first quarter." They're still not ready to take it to the first quarter. I think that's going back to your previous question. But if we're fortunate enough to get council approval, we'd work with LaShawn in the mayor's office to come up with a cadence on how frequently they want reports.
Okay, I would like to ask that if it's the make, well, I guess we don't, this isn't a regular meeting, but I would like the resolution to include that council be given, if you're gonna be doing monthly reports, we don't have to have weekly, but I would like council to be, to see the monthly reports. And my reason for that is, this is, I understand LaShawn talked about places we've done this in the past, and obviously, the city outsources various services for lots of different things, and in one sense, that's what this is. But in other sense, this is something new for us, and at least in recent history. And if this were to move forward, I would want to be able, for our own learning, to see what that looks like, as we're investing this money for this purpose. So, I, I, sorry, I've been on council for six years, but in a study meeting, do I need to ask the maker of the motion to include that? Okay, Paul's nodding his head. Brandon, are you willing to include that? Okay. And that's the semi-questions. Thank you, both of you. I just wanna say this, in the spirit of transparency, and I'll be candid, if the mayor had not left, I would've asked her this question. But just in the interest of transparency, I think it's important that people know a little bit of background here. This proposal was first suggested informally to a number of us on council about two years ago. Not for this specific purpose, but for this type of service. And out of those discussions, we did not proceed with that, or the mayor chose not to proceed with that. Later on that summer, I'll just speak for myself, I was told by the mayor, when she was making the case for the Department of Governmental Affairs, which this council then, after hearing her case, approved an ordinance change in order to create that, based on the case that she made, she told me that, harkening back to that previous discussion, that part of the reason we needed this Department of Governmental Affairs was because that would've given us in-house the resources to do this kind of work. A lot of the reason for my questions on this is, that's what I was told, and now here we are outsourcing this anyway. And as I look at this from the taxpayer's perspective, and I look at, with everything that I said earlier about the relationships we already have, I think there are legitimate questions to be asked about, is this necessary? I understand this is necessary sometimes. It may well be necessary this time. But those are the reason for my questions, and I appreciate you both so willingly answering those for me. Thanks.
Councilman Dominic?
Go to Kathleen first.
Oh, pardon me, go ahead, Kathleen. Councilwoman McIntyre?
Okay. Just some clarification, please, through the chair, if I may.
Please do.
And I'm not sure if I should direct this to you, Ms. Thomas, or to Mr. Price. I just heard, Shannon, I didn't know that you had an appointment from the county. How can you lobby the county when you are an appointee of the county without that posing a problem? And I didn't know until tonight that you had a, you know, and I probably should've known that you had a...
No, I mean, that's, I mean, it's a separate body, and the building authority, the county executive gets an appointment to the building authority, and I don't believe there's a conflict of interest, if that's what you're getting at, on my appointment on the building authority. It doesn't deal with commission business, if you will.
Khalil doesn't have any involvement?
No.
With the building commission?
Nope.
And my second question is, your firm, and I guess it's your firm and Mr. Garvalia's firm, what other Wayne County communities do you do lobbying work for with the county?
We do work with Northville Township and Canton Township.
So, are you also helping them obtain funding?
We've had discussions with them on what their projects should be, and LaShawn can explain, you know, talk about this as well. The county, like, all during twenty-one, 2021, was having weekly meetings with municipalities on what their goals were and what they were looking for in these projects. A lot of communities, you know, like a better term, they wanted, the county would love to see transformational projects. For example, the Livonia Catalyst project is a transformational project. A lot of communities were submitting or trying to push projects that were, excuse me, fire stations, road projects, pathways, that were not meeting that goal. So, in Northville, for example, they're working with Plymouth Township on their five-mile corridor and coming up with that plan. Canton Township, we talked to them about, don't submit for a fire station and redoing Canton Center Road. You're not gonna get traction with the county on that.
So, you and Mr. Garvalia will be lobbying the county for funding on behalf, really, of three Wayne County communities?
If they ask on that case. Northville Township, for example, that's kind of, they're doing all that through the MITC, and we're more focused on state funding for them, and trying to get some money for state funding and the psychiatric hospital property for them.
I have a, I'd like to ask the maker of the motion. I would like any reports that are provided, if this contract goes ahead, to be made available to the council. And I'm not talking about, you know, like billing and things like that, but if there are weekly reports that show the progress and who we're talking to, I'd just like those to be made available to the council, largely for the reasons that Mr. Barr cited about.
I have no issue.
All right, those are my questions. Thank you very much, Shannon, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I would just like to agree with my colleagues, I would like to see those reports as well. Whether they be weekly or monthly, I think, I think that would be appropriate. Since it is such a large project, I remember before I was on council, there was another large project, the DPW building, and there was really a comprehensive project, a lot of discussion went into that, a lot of committee meetings, a lot of communication back and forth, and we're talking about another fairly large project. And this is just another reason why I think we do need a firm to handle it, because it is such a large project. And sure, I wish there was more bandwidth within our, within our community, within our city, to do that within City Hall, but I don't think there is the bandwidth to get it done when we're talking to fifteen commissioners and a county executive. One of most of those commissioners are gonna be vying for their own cities and their own districts that they serve in. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Just a real quick comment. You know, Wayne County is a very unique county in the state of Michigan. We were called the adopted stepchildren up in the state, because we have so many different entities and so many different groups and considerations, it's a real scramble when you're dealing, no offense, I'm not knocking the county, I'm just saying, you really gotta know what you're doing when you're down at that, even at commission level, let alone some of the inner-office kinds of things that you kind of gotta know. Sometimes, it's more challenging than the state, believe it or not, because of some of the personalities, quite frankly, and some of the different behavior modes that you wanna be careful of and step lightly on. This is twenty-one million dollars. This is really gonna help us get this whole building underway, I would hope. And if there's any more, let's get more, but, obviously, but in all sincerity, if we have people that are experienced, I'm all about it. I think that this is a little bit bigger than what we probably propose with an in-house person, that, not that personnel isn't skilled in that, or perhaps knows it, but again, the uniqueness of this county, honestly, just dealing. And those of us that have lived here, we know some of those, I mean, just look at the roads. I mean, you know, and how you gotta get into the whole pothole situation, let alone the paving. And, you know, our DPW people do a super job with them, the water department. I mean, we've positioned ourselves very well in our city, but we are a large city, and so I think that helps us. And we are a city that pays our bills, and I think that also helps us. But we do have a unique county here, and I think we really need people that know this county to lobby, or whatever you wanna say, influence, whatever it be. And quite frankly, you guys, I think it's a small price for what we're gonna get, hopefully. And that's twenty-one million dollars, a nice chunk of change at this point. And then we get to go to the state, who's got a boatload of money. So, you know, maybe, maybe we can get some more there, too. So, I just wanted to add to the conversation a little bit, and thank you. All my colleagues make great points.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Can I just ask, you actually just said something that prompted one more question, if I may?
Please, go ahead.
I understand from the presentation we saw last week that after the discussions with the county, there is gonna be some talk with the state for some of their ARPA dollars. Is that included in this contract, if it makes sense within the year?
You mean, are you asking?
Lobbying services at the state level, or is this for county only?
This is just specifically for the county right now, yes.
So, should we expect to see another proposal in the future for the state law?
I would say, right now, we're in talks with the state. I really can't give an answer on that.
I mean, from a lobbying services perspective, are you guys gonna be coming to us, asking to do another contract for the state level, in addition to this one?
We've had no discussion on that whatsoever.
Okay, but this is specifically for lobbying efforts at the county?
Yes.
Only?
Yes.
Okay. I know we have an approving on the floor. I would like to have a denying available as well, when we talk about this in a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Certainly. Yeah, go ahead, and then Councilman McCullough.
I would like to ask at the next meeting, when this is on the regular, that since, this was a request from both the Governmental Affairs Office and the mayor's office, and Ms. Thomas, I thought you did an outstanding job of presenting tonight, and really appreciate it, but I'd like to ask that the mayor is in attendance, 'cause I think there were some questions that really were directed at her role in putting this plan together, and so I think it would be appropriate if she attended that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd like to make that request.
Request as well, okay.
Just real quick.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, kind of bringing it up, you know, kind of getting back at this, you know, the fiscal responsibility, we're the stewards of the people. The way I look at this is, we are entrusting, if we're giving a contract to a firm, and the end goal is to hopefully get a nice chunk of money that's sitting out there that, in my opinion, the city of Livonia has been getting, you know, the opposite side of. So, that's what we expect, and that's what will hold, hopefully, the firm's feet to the fire. Council Vice President Toy brought up another point. You have the state money that has billions of dollars just sitting there. And at least my hope and goal is, for the residents and everybody in the city, is that this works out for the county, and then what do we do at the state? Because there's at some point where the state's gonna be divvying up that pie, and if we do not have a, you know, hand in that table, everybody else is gonna get that. So, I wanna go on record to state that I think that this proposal is so small in the grand scheme of what we can potentially get to kick off our master plan of Livonia Vision 21, which is city center, and that includes moving potentially the senior center, this is huge for a city. So, there's a lot that, you know, I hope that this passes, and, you know, then we're gonna entrust the firm, you know, go out and get the money, should we say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council wishing to speak at this time? No, I'll move into the audience then. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Hearing and seeing no one. I think all the questions have been posed, or maybe we have others that can be brought up later. If you want, we'll move off of this, and council, at your pleasure. Thank you very much for appearing tonight, taking your time out. Thank you. Okay, item six, council is a request for approval of a plan documents for a 401A defined contribution plan and the 457B deferred compensation plan. It's brought to us from the Civil Service Department. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Janine Liebel. It's nice to see you all again. I'm here to request that the plan documents be approved, so we can submit them to empower who is our third-party service provider for both of our 401A and our 457B plans. The restatement is required by the IRS every, approximately every six years. They cause all plans to be restated to incorporate any legislative or policy changes that have come about in the relatively recent time of the six years. It's time for us to do that with ours. The deadline is July 31st. We are in a good place to move forward, but we have to have these plan documents signed first. They've been reviewed by our outside counsel that handles the retirement portion of our legal diligence, and they've also been reviewed by Mike Slater in our finance office.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Direction? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You look a little bit different than Denise Mayer. I'd like to offer an approving on consent, if there's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. We have an approving on consent. Any others, council? No? Anyone from the audience? No? You have an approving on consent?
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yes, certainly. Thank you for being here. Okay, council, we're on item seven, which is award a bid, Department of Parks and Rec, for the replacement of a pool heater at Botsford Pool from budgeted funds. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, council. I'm Stephanie Minugian, aquatics coordinator for the Parks and Rec Department, and I'm here tonight to ask for approval to replace our pool heater at Botsford Pool. The current heater has come to the end of its life. It's no longer consistent in heating the pool, so this replacement would help provide a better service to our guests that use the pool, especially our swim teams in the morning, when practices can be around sixty degrees. We received two bids. The low bid came from A&amp;F Water Heater in the amount of ninety-six thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents, and this is budgeted in the Botsford Pool budget.
When is the last time we replaced this heater, or have we?
The heater, from the records I have been able to see, was replaced in 2008.
So, before you were born?
Before I was, no. I was born in the eighty-nineties.
Sorry, council. All righty. Thank you, Stephanie. Yes, Councilman Barr?
I think you're mixing it up with the year that you graduated from high school.
Yes, that's it, sir, yes, sir.
That's what I thought. I'd be happy to offer this for approving for consent, if there's no objection.
Thank you very much. We have an approving from Councilman Barr. Any others? Hearing and seeing none, anybody from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, you have an approving.
Thank you very much.
Certainly, thank you for waiting. Item eight is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and accept proposal, excuse me, the Department of Parks and Recreation, for the replacement of a bungalow roof at Greenmead Historical Park from budgeted funds. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President, Council Vice President Toy, Ted Davis representing Parks and Recreation. I feel like I should keep Stephanie up here. She got through much quicker than I usually do, so...
She did a lot better job than you do.
She's a lot smarter than I am, so, thank you. And we are asking for waiving of the sealed bid process for replacement of the bungalow roof at Greenmead. This project was brought forth before council several months ago. It was initially bid as a cedar roof. Council rejected that and asked Historic Preservation Commission to approve alternative materials. HBC did approve one alternative material. We received bids for an asphalt shingle roof that was three times as high as the cedar roof that we are asking now to go back to. So, that is the process here. This has taken us about nine months to get to this point. And again, we're asking that council approve this, authorize this expenditure and waive the sealed bid process, 'cause we already went through the bid process previously for this project. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Councilman McCullough, then?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Through the chair to Mr. Davis. How's the building holding up right now?
It's...
I mean...
I mean, we've had it, we've had the roof repaired, but there are gonna be issues soon.
Now, and obviously, the master plan is progressing. Do we have any idea when we're looking at that final report? I know we had the focus group meeting.
Yeah, the focus group was beneficial, I believe, that our contractor, Wade Trim, received all the feedback they felt they needed at this point. I'm anticipating a draft plan within the next couple of weeks, and then we would bring the Greenmead Master Plan Steering Committee back together and take a look at that, go through that also with Historic Preservation and Historical Commission, and submit any changes we would have, and then have a final plan soon.
I just, I'm stuck kind of like what we were discussing... I just, I'm stuck, kind of like what we were discussing months ago at this meeting, is, you know, the cedar shake, obviously, is a resilient, heavy maintenance, for preventative, should we say. The, what was it? The, it was a three-tab, right?
Three-tab asphalt shingle. That was what the HPC approved on this.
No synthetic?
No synthetic. We did get the Historic Preservation Commission to approve a synthetic that we found for the Alexander Blue House. Now, that's a different building. That's an adaptive reuse, so they felt they had a little more leeway with that. And with regards to the ship office as well, gave a little more leeway. It also took us about six months and about a dozen tries to find a suitable composite material that was, that the Historic Preservation Commission felt good about. We did go out to bid for the Alexander Blue House roof. That material is very expensive as well. This is, this is one of these projects where, I mean, I do understand the difficulty here, and...
Listen, I hate to defer. I mean, obviously, I'm in a profession that deals directly with this type of work, and as much as, you know, I remember sitting on the other side, kind of going, hey, can we please proceed with this? What, I guess, let me ask you, I mean, is this something you want to proceed with? Is this the general direction that we should be going in?
Yes.
Then I will offer an approving for consent. There are no objections.
Thank you. Anyone else from the city council? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one. We have an approving on consent.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Item nine is from, award a bid from the Department of Parks and Recreation, again, for various types of clothing for a two-year period from budget of funds. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council Vice President Toy. Again, this is a two-year bid process that comes up. We, as council can see, we split out the bid and award every single article in here to the low bidder, so we are getting the absolute best price for the residents of Livonia for each article of clothing that we purchase, from lifeguard t-shirts for Stephanie's staff, to softball award, long-sleeved t-shirts or sweatshirts. We are literally going item by item and awarding to the low bid across the table, and asking that council approve these vendors based on the low bid for each product.
Please, go right ahead.
Just a question, will the logo be on the shirts?
Yes, it will. Yes, it will.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I'll offer approving for consent, if there's no objection. And Ted, you did okay tonight.
Thank you. But not as good as Ms. Minugian. Yes, I agree.
Should have really had her to the roof.
Possibly.
I really hate to ask what color the t-shirts will be, or multicolor. No, never mind. You have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Unless there's somebody from the audience? No? Okay. Yes, Mr. Davis, thank you. Okay. Item 10 is a request to approve the Alliance of the Rouge Communities ARC Annual Assessment for 2022, Public Service Division, this is, in the amount of $37,022 from budget of funds. Mr. Roroff?
Good evening, council. Thank you. Don Roroff, DPW. As mentioned, we are looking for funding for this year's annual dues for the Alliance of Rouge Communities. As you know, we've been a member since inception, excuse me, with the ARC. We are still in negotiations with the state, with Eagle, with the MS4 stormwater permitting process, that the ARC and the communities that are involved with that are still pushing forward. We are finally to a point, I hope, that it's being let out for public comment, so that's a great thing that we've been working on since 2016 with them. And as you know, the ARC staff reduces city employee staff time in dealing with some of the common things that we would use with communications with other communities. The ARC also helps us write reports and renew license with MDQ, GLWA, and Wayne County. I would be happy to answer any questions with this. Moving forward, it is requested that council approve the payment to the ARC for the 2022 dues in the amount of $37,022 from budgeted funds.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
I'll offer an approving for consent on this one, because it's, it's an assessment that we are, and I'm sorry, Don, you may have said this. Are we obligated to pay this, or is this a, is this one like the senior alliance, where we're assessed and asked to pay?
We are assessed and asked to pay. We choose to be a member.
Yep. So, the payment is required in order for us to be a member of the...
That is correct.
Thank you, yeah. I thought there was a level at which it was an obligation, so...
Fifty percent of the ARC funding comes from community assessments, and the other 50% is from federal grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others from the council? Anyone from the audience? We have an approving on consent. Madam Clerk, thank you. Item 11 is a request to approve our annual renewal of software licensing and maintenance from sold source provider, this Department of Public Works, from the Aztechia Systems LLC, for the DPW Work Management Systems for the period of March 1, '22 through February 28 of '23, and includes City Works online from budget of funds. Mr. Roroff?
Thank you.
Certainly.
As stated, we are looking for a renewal with our software licensing with City Works. The software's licensing and maintenance agreement with City Works is included in the 2022 capital budget. City Works is an asset management system that we use for the department to track service requests that come in, work orders. We jumped on board with City Works in 2016. They track complaint calls, work orders, equipment, fuel, payroll, aid, and budget development. And originally, this City Works was purchased through a SAW grant that we got back in 2016. City Works works directly hand-in-hand with our GIS. Everything is map-based when we use this. It's pretty much our everything for anything that has to do with service requests, works, work orders, anything in that regard. So it is requested that council move forward with the payment of $86,500 to City Works for our annual agreement, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Council, yes, Councilwoman McIntyre?
Thanks, Don. Does this, so, does this integrate with our new app?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent for this.
Thank you. Councilwoman McIntyre is offered approving and consent. Any others? Anyone from the audience? Seeing and hearing no one? Okay. Mr. Roroff, are you up again? You are. Request for authorization to purchase one 2022 Ford F-350 state truck, what is this? Through the State of Michigan and Macomb County bid process, and for use by Roads Department from budget of funds. Go right ahead, sir.
That is correct. Thank you. So, the truck being requested was approved in the 2022 capital outlay budget. This truck will be assigned to the Roads Construction Section, and we primarily use with the sign shop. The vehicle that's currently in the sign shop is a 1997, and I would stand up here proudly and say that we've pretty much milked that as far as we can get. As stated, the purchase of the chassis and the cab will be through the state bid process. The servicing dealer is Signature Ford out of Owasso, for the purchase price of $42,939. The upfitting of the truck, which includes a post-puller, toolbox, crane, water tank, pump, snowplow, and municipal safety lighting, obviously, because they're dealing with major roads and different roads when they're installing and doing sign work. And the servicing dealer for this is Versalift out of Shelby. That upfitting amount is $55,607. The truck that will be being replaced will be disposed of through the auction process. This will not increase our fleet. As I stated, it's a 1997. We are more than done with the original. So, the total costs with the two dealers involved is $98,546, and we are looking for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Barr?
Yeah, as someone who has essentially made a sport in the past out of trying to squeeze every bit of value out of my vehicles before I limp them into a salvage yard, I'm impressed. 1997? Man. I'll offer approving for consent, if there's no objection.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, a question?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Roroff, thanks for being here tonight. Looking at the packet, the title says vehicle number 157, but the packet says unit number 158. Are there, I don't mean to put you on the spot, are there 158 vehicles in the city, or just different vehicles, or machinery, what have you?
There's over 700 pieces of equipment and machinery. So, what we do is, when we retire one vehicle, we try to stay in that series with the new vehicle and a vehicle number being assigned to that.
Thank you, Ms. Roroff.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no one else from council, go to the audience. Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one. We have an approving on consent by Councilman Barr. Item 13, council is a request for authorization to purchase one 2022 Ford F-350 state truck. Well, the VIN number here is, or if it is, vehicle number 158, through the State of Michigan and the Macomb County bid process for the use by the Roads Department from budget of funds. Mr. Roroff?
Thank you. As stated previously, the state bid and the my deal contract are the same for each of the vehicles. This, again, will be, this truck will be assigned to the Roads Division, and it will be used as the construction, in our construction division there. As I have stated in the past, we are trying to bring more and more in-house work with our Roads program, our selective slag program, those type of things. This vehicle is the frontline piece of equipment for that, that type of work. Again, the outfitting will be done through Versalift. The dealership that we will be buying the chassis from is Signature. $42,939 is exactly the same for the cabin chassis. The upfitting is a different price of $38,198, opposed to the previous truck. And the truck that we'll be replacing will be disposed of through the auction process. We will not be increasing our fleet, and that vehicle currently is a 2008, so they're not making as good as they used to. But we are looking for approval for that tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair.
Certainly. Councilman Barr?
I'll offer approving for consent, if there's no objection. I do have one question, though, Don, just a procedural question. Why is it that these are two separate items? It just occurred to me. Sometimes we see these together, and sometimes they're separate.
Yeah, I would love to be able to group them all together. If there's a different number through the upfitting, we just try to keep it separate.
I see.
If that's a request from council, believe me, I'd be happy to put it on one piece of paper.
I feel like we do it, like, for police vehicles and stuff, we do them together, right? And so, I, anyway, it's, I'm offering approving for consent. I was just curious why it was separate.
Yeah, I'm not trying to have the most items on the agenda or anything.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
Thank you for all this, Don, and as long as we have you here, I'd just like to respectfully ask you that we're still waiting for some detail on that work that was done in conjunction with the underground electrical program, or underground electrical problem over at Fire Station Number One. Thanks.
Yep. We'll work on that. I know we've reached out to the electrical contractor to try to schedule him up to get in.
And I know you guys have a lot on your plate.
Yeah.
And I guess I'm not directly supposed to ask you that. I would ask it to go through the administration, but I don't think there's anyone here directly representing the administration tonight, so.
Understood.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And one other thing, congratulations. I understand you have a new grandchild.
I do. He's awesome. He was born on the 12th, so.
Great. Happy for everybody.
Thank you. It's awesome. Have a great night. Thank you.
Yes, and please thank your team over there for all the plowing and late nights and everything else, too, from all of us.
Exceptional work.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, they've done, they've done a wonderful job this year. We've had a couple of panic buttons that have hit, obviously, through the media and that, that haven't quite lived up to expectation, which never hurts my feelings. But we've had to attack these a little bit different than we have in the past, and they've done a great job responding and kind of moving on the fly, so I will relay that information. Thank you.
And you even let Mr. Moore get out of town for a few days. It's pretty remarkable. You must have looked at the weather forecast and decided he could go.
I bought him a little thing of suntan lotion. I said, please use it, so.
Great. Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, council, we're on item 14, which is a request to amend the engineering contract through the qualification process, or based, excuse me, selection QBS process with Hubble, Roth, and Clark for engineering services for the water replacement feasibility study. Merriman Road Water Main Replacement Project, Plymouth Road to CSX Railroad right-of-way, is brought to us by the Engineering Department. Mr. Zalinsik?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, city council members. Just a little background, Hubble, Roth, and Clark has been very instrumental in our water main replacements on our older roads. Recently, they did Five Mile Road between Inkster and Merriman Road in two stages, one in 2017 and 2019. We're asking again for their assistance on Merriman Road from Plymouth to the CSX Railroad, about approximately 2,300 lineal feet, in the effort to get survey and figure out where we can replace that. County allows a lot of telecommunications that were put on the west side of the road that are in conflict if we do replacement at that location, so we're asking for your approval. For HRC, we have Representatives Brad Schepler, the associate, in the audience, along with Jack Nagel, the project engineer, who were also instrumental back in the project on Five Mile, and looking for your approval in the amount of $52,872, of which half of that's related to the survey work, to then figure out the best location to place that water main and move forward with, you know, replacements and reduce the cost of future water main breaks for the city of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you. Council? Yes, Councilman Don?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Zalinsik, so this, the money that they're asking HRC, this doesn't actually cover the work, the replacing of the material, the parts on the ground?
Correct. This is, you know, normally, we'd do just design service. They would do that normally. Unfortunately, they need to figure out where we need to put this, based on the survey of the existing utilities that are out there, then come back to city council for the final design based on our feasibility study, and then we'll go out for bids for that contract, award it to a contractor, and then part of that will be their CE or inspector days to make sure that's complete.
So, part of them, they'll actually monitor the actual work being done as well?
Eventually, in the future. Once we, once we figure out we want to put the water main, we got background information from Wayne County, Eagle, because there are some contaminated areas out there, being that industrial corridor. We want to make sure we have all our, you know, feathers in a row, so we can go out for design and bid out properly for the contractors. And we're hoping, again, to do construction later this year with design and get better prices, too, obviously, for the work to be done.
So, they won't be coming back to us later on, when we start the construction, for more money? This is all inclusive in this one contract?
Incorrect. They will, I need to come back for design services, and then, once it's bid out, they'll have inspector days as part of that, as part of the construction, engineering, and administration. So, I'll have to come back to city council twice. This is a unique project because of the numerous telecommunications that are out there that's going to be impacting the design process itself. So, we need to get a good base survey for this project to help make sure that we solidify the location and get agreement from Wayne County, because it's in their jurisdiction, along with the best placement for the utility.
Sure. Some of my other colleagues may have questions. I'll offer an approving on consent, if there's no objection.
Okay, Councilman, thank you, Councilman Donovan. Any others? Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. We have an approving on consent by Councilman Donovan. Okay. All right. Item 15, council is a request to waive formal bid bidding process and approve the 2022 concrete road repair program by extending the contract 20C unit prices on the hard rock concrete. Mr. Zalinsik?
Thank you. Hard Rock Concrete has asked to keep their existing unit prices from 2020. The only change would be additional items. There's several new items based on the proposed concrete road improvements in the city of Livonia, along with the mobilization cost. Again, however, the, they're still cheaper than the second lowest bidder from 2020, based on the cost that we have. And they were the contractor in 2011 and 2013 to 2021. Again, this is our last year of our millage. We're hoping for a renewal on August, on August 2nd, to continue this successful program. Tony Grimaldi is the president from Hard Rock Concrete. He's out in the audience, does a great job to keep our subdivision streets that people drive completed, and also looking to help this year. We have a couple bad areas we want to tackle. The first critical one is Brentwood, from baseline Eight Mile up to Pembroke. Also, if you know School Craft Road, the last time that was touched was 2014. We're looking to do the eastbound portion there, just before Merriman Road, the dedicated left turn lane to go north onto Merriman Road. Fortunately, we couldn't do that last year because of the Great Lakes Water Authority project. But again, we're looking to take his, his contract and get those areas completed with a few others, in the amount of $4,997,921 for 2022 road program. We have, answer any questions, if you have any.
Yes. Councilman McCullough?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Through the chair to Mr. Zalinsik, just a question. You know, waiving the formal bid process is understandable, but I know it seems to be more and more lately on this. And the only question that I do have, and I did read the recommendation from AEW, Hard Rock phenomenal. I mean, they've been around the city for a lot of time. They do great work. There's no, there's no question there. My, my major question is, in 2020, we were in the middle of a pandemic. And so, I know inflation is booming right now, but those costs during 2020... inflation is booming right now, but those costs during 2020 were all over the map as well. Do you, is it the professional opinion of AEW that the pricing is, was better to stick with this contract? I mean, that's what they're saying in that letter, correct?
That is correct. Obviously, the big thing that's gone up is materials. You figure underdrain, lane ties, concrete. Lucky Tony's done a good volume of concrete to keep that major cost down, to help keep these contract prices close for the city, and also is, is obviously just a, just a stone throw away in the next community in Westland. So, with that ability to keep, you know, his trucks close by, he's not traveling, we're very, again, grateful to keep, take advantage of these unit prices. Otherwise, I think, as you see from contracts have been bidding out, that we have a much bigger price than had to cut off several more streets for the city and the less, less road miles for the residents.
Do you intend on going back out to bid after this, this contract?
We are hopeful for renewal in August, and then obviously hit reset for all contracts, and hopefully things have stabilized after this last couple of years with the, I think, supply chain and material costs. I think a lot last year, we found the aspect of there was hardly any materials to get. There was a delay in getting underdrained, let alone lane ties and other, other materials.
Even if you went out to bid right now, I mean, it's, it's a gamble, so no. As long as that's, that's the process going forward. I know that our sidewalk, I was looking on Madden today, and the sidewalk program is out on the streets right now, so that's, that's a great thing. So, if there's no problems, I'll offer an approving for consent.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Any others, counsel? Yes. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Madam Chair, if I may through the chair. And Todd, when was the, the Hard Rock, just relative to what Councilmember McCullough said, when in 2020 do you, do you know did we sign the Hard Rock contract?
They had just been out, just before the pandemic hit.
I was going to say...
We got lucky right before that pandemic hit. You know, they were out for bids. We had to, you had the clerk, we had to hand deliver them or send them email because we couldn't take the bids at that time, I believe. It was right after that.
Yeah, and with all due respect to the point that Councilmember McCullough brought, brought up, that Hard Rock contract was bid, and I thought I remembered it was, early in the year before the prices went all over the place. So, if they were the low bidder by over a million dollars in 2020, early in the year, you know, we, we weren't, we had a, we had a good benchmark, right, to look at that cost again, so thank you.
Donovan, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Mr. Zalinsik, for the maintenance aspect, what is different between maintenance and reconstruction?
Typically, what happens is there may be a small segment after the reconstruct that requires selective slab replacement. Instead of having a separate contractor come into that small area that's already been under traffic control, trying to, again, save tax dollars, tax dollars, we just have that contractor do the small portion of selective slabs, continue on maybe a, a street block or, you know, 500 feet or 1,000 feet, just to clean up the area to the next interception. So, that's what the maintenance portion of that is.
Thank you for that, and I, I'm supportive of Hard Rock getting this bid. I mean, they do wonderful work, and to your point, Mr. Zalinsik, they do, they do a lot of work, so they're able to get better pricing than maybe a smaller concrete company, and we've been with them for a while now, and I'm not necessarily in lirity to just change just for the sake of changing and potentially costing taxpayers more money. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, the best thing is the owner's on the job site every day, so it makes it easier so when, if there's something that comes up, they've helped us in the past for a water main break, where our guys removed it and they poured it back, so we've worked hand in hand to make sure these areas are addressed properly.
They take pride in their work. Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, then we have an approving on consent. Okay, council, we're on item 16, which is a request to amend the contract with Anderson, Eckstein and Wesrick Inc. for construction engineering services for the 2022 concrete road program, contract 22-C, Engineering Division. Mr. Zalinsik?
Yes, again, under QBS contract, one of our consultants, AW, Ross Willemerd, is here tonight to represent AW. Again, this is just based on the amount of the contract, just under $5 million. The cost for them to provide the testing and construction engineering portion for this is $600,000. We're asking for city council to approve that amount under budgeted funds, and Ross is here if you have any questions. Unfortunately, Scott Lockwood was not able to attend this evening, but again, he's always supportive of this program and appreciate all their efforts behind the scenes to get us to this point.
Great. Thank you. Counsel, yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
I would be happy to offer the approval for this on, on consent. It's from budgeted funds, correct? And we are very happy with AW's work, and I think it makes sense to continue on with them for the 2022 concrete road program.
Thank you.
That is an approval on consent, correct, Councilwoman? Yes. Okay. Any others? Anybody from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, then we have an approving on consent. Item 17, council, is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2022 concrete road maintenance selective slab program by extending contract 21-J unit prices with Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC. This is brought to us from the Engineering Division. Mr. Zalinsik?
Yes, we're asking city council to approve the contract unit prices from 2021, in which Great Lakes Solutions provided. The only difference is the mobilization cost has changed in this contract, because they're going out throughout various areas in the city. Before, we kind of had a concentrated area last year on Blue Skies and one, one other street close by in that area, and the rest were miscellaneous locations. They do have a couple other locations to facilitate, and again, are asking for approval in the amount of $837,903.62. Great Lakes Solutions also does applying for the city in the wintertime. So, again, they're familiar with the city of Livonia, take pride in their work. They're actually working for Canton Township, too, on their road millage, so it's economy of scales. They're, they're close by. I kind of joked that this is the filler work, Kansas filler work for our, our job for this selective slab program. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, your pleasure.
Madam Chair?
Certainly. Councilman Barr?
I will offer this for approving, for consent, offer and approving for consent if there's no objection, please.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Barr has offered approving on consent. Any others? Anybody from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, we have an approving on consent. Excuse me. Item 18, council, is a request to amend the contract with Anderson, Eckstein and Wesrick Inc. for construction engineering services for the 2022 concrete road maintenance selective slab program, contract 22-J. Mr. Zalinsik?
Again, this is a QBS contract. Again, it's based on the contract unit price of $837,903.62. We're asking for city council's approval from budgeted funds in the amount of $100,539 to provide construction engineering and testing for the contract to replace those selective slabs and 25 miscellaneous locations that were called in and ferreted out between DPW and Engineering, and looking for your approval. And again, Ross from AW is here if you have any further questions. He's been very instrumental in both these programs, the 22-C and the 22-J program to bring, relieve residents that have concerns with areas of deteriorating pavement in front of their place, and look forward to, again, fixing those this year.
Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there's no objection from my colleagues.
Anyone? Anything else? Seeing no one from the council, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one, we have an approving on consent. The last item of this evening, council's number 19, which is a request to approve the 2022, 2027 capital improvements program, is brought to us by the Planning Commission, submitted pursuant to state law to be used as a guide to funding priority capital projects. Go right ahead, Mr. Turbina. I was calling you Mr. Nagy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
That's going back, sir.
That is going back, yes. This item involves considerations, consideration of the city's six-year capital improvements program, which, as you know, provides a schedule of anticipated capital expenditures over a six-year period, in this case from 2022 through, and ending in 2027. And like previous plans, does incorporate the recommendations of the various departments that are responsible for planning and overseeing the significant capital improvements within the city. The plan, this year, we used a little different approach, actually quite a, quite a significant change from previous years. We've compiled all the data using a relational database program access, and we're using, restoring all that information in a cloud-based system. So, what this does, it has several improvements, but what it does chiefly is it allows it to be a living document, and it can be updated at any time and available any time, and it also allows the user to query the data in all different ways. I provided you just a sample of how that's done using the SharePoint link that's in the, the report. I won't go into the details. We've provided many of those to the Planning Commission. Councils typically receives and files this information. You're not required to approve it. That's, that's your choice, and I, I know that in past years, it's, it's gone into committee for follow-up discussion, so it's whatever the pleasure of the, of the council is at this point, Madam President.
Certainly. Thank you. Go right ahead, Councilman Donovan, and then Councilwoman McIntyre.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Could you give us a breakdown of what the, below is a breakdown of the cost of each of the eight major capital projects?
Sure.
$95 million for buildings? Just kind of give us, I mean, are those rough numbers? Is that what we anticipate? $95 million to replace all Livonia City buildings?
Yeah, so, so those would be significant building, not only construction project, but other improvement proposals or, or capital improvements that would fall under that building category. So, the largest one, of course, would be a new building like the police station, which I think that council is familiar with seeing in previous CIPs. But then it does include other significant projects that fall under the building category that might be renovations, it might be improvements, additions, and those sorts of things, even ancillary structures, so... And you can, and you, and again, you can go to the, the app that we've provided a link for, and you can filter the data, and it'll show everything that falls under that building category, and so it's an easy way to reference that, that information.
Thank you. Councilwoman McIntyre?
And Mark, is this, is this something, this is available to us, right? To, to be able to look at?
Yes, again, if, if you go to the report we provided in Civic Clerk and you follow that link, that is data that will be updated regularly.
Okay.
From time to time. So, as, as we reach out to the departments and ask them to update this, when they make a change, it'll appear on that, on that web-based file.
Who, so who, and I'm sorry if I missed this in the packet, so you maintain this in your office, right?
Correct.
Who, who, who set this up?
Oh, Planning Department.
Okay.